Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for coming to Wellsville Safety Commission. We may be starting a couple minutes late, but let's just get right to it. Deputy City Clerk Stripey, please call the roll. Councilmember Midnight, here. City Manager Barry, here. City Attorney Brownie, here. Commissioner Darby, absent. Commissioner Lucas, here. Commissioner Jam, here. Mayor... Chief Dylan Rubin, here. Mayor Pro Tim Freckles, here. Mayor Dylan Rubin, here. You have a corn.
Important meeting.
Meeting, important.
Look at this cutie.
Kitty, me, Poppy, Ponda Midnight, and Yoda.
Oh, this is precious. What kind of meeting are you in?
Like, the city permit meeting. It was a city permit meeting.
Look at this little cute face. So we have Dylan, the mayor. We have Poppy.
The deputy city clerk. Ponda, the human resources director. Kitty, the council member.
Kitty looks like she's kind of sleeping on the job there.
No, she was leaning over. Midnight, council member. Yoda, um, Yoda, um, human resources secretary.
Oh, secretary to the human...oh, very good.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for coming to Wellsville Safety Commission. We may be starting a couple minutes late, but let's just get right to it. Deputy City Clerk Stripey, please call the roll. Councilmember Midnight, here. City Manager Barry, here. City Attorney Brownie, here. Commissioner Hollow, absent. Commissioner Lucas, here. Commissioner Darby, absent. Commissioner Roger, here. Mayor Pro Tim. Chief Dylan Rubin, here. Here. Mayor Pro Tim Freckles, here. Mayor Dylan Rubin, here. You have a corn. Yes, thank you very much. Well, let's get right to the new police fleet, public comment first. So, we're gonna give speakers a few minutes. Make sure, so lately, I've gotten some notices that people have been raising their hands on the safety commission, but they haven't been raising it visible to where the camera, so Stripey wouldn't see it. So please make sure you raise your hand visible so that you can see it on camera. So please raise your hand like that if you're on Zoom. But if you're in chambers, please raise your hand like that or fill out a public comment card, okay? My co-mayor Roger is sitting right behind Stripey. Okay, we'll give speakers a few minutes. Stripey, do you have any comments? We have one, Lucy. Okay, so as you all know, we're trying to fix our cameras, trying to do a little construction in the chambers. So Lucy is behind the camera, so the camera can't really catch this, okay? So Lucy.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for letting me have my public comment. I just wanted to say, give a big thank you to the Safety Commission team and all the commissioners for keeping the streets of Wellsville safe and making sure that our dangerous criminals, Tippy Rubin, are behind bars so that he can't assault anybody. I just want to give a big thank you to the Safety Commission. So thank you.
Thank you, Lucy. Thank you, thank you. So, Mr. Deputy City Clerk Stripey, just to clarify, do we have any more public comments? No. Okay, thank you very much. So let's get to the police fleet. So what we've done is that we've got a new police fleet. I have a little picture of it with me. So I have a picture of the new police fleet with me. Like a flying bird in it. I have, I think I have it with me. I don't have the police fleet photos with me today. Sorry, but I do actually have it with me. But errant on a projector, but as you know, our camera is angled at a certain way, so the camera's not gonna see it, but you can see it in the chambers if you walk in, okay? So, here. As you can see, we have our new police fleet, and we're gonna be showing this off at the art show, okay? It was supposed to be a surprise, but I guess I spoiled it. But we will have it at the art show, showing it, all the new vehicles we added to our fleet, one from every department. So, yeah. So our new police fleet, I want to ask everybody to please, that if you are driving these SUV vehicles, please keep them cleaned. We have two undercover ones. Actually, we have four undercover ones, and then four cars that have names on them. And then the rest of them are Ford. So I'm gonna ask everybody, please keep these vehicles cleaned, because in the other vehicles, I've been noticing like stains in them when I walk around the yard. At the end of the day, I've been noticing like stains on the seats and everything. So I'm gonna ask no food or staining drinks in the car, just water or energy drinks in the vehicle when you are all present in the vehicle at all times. Thank you. So I want to talk about a vehicle safety check. I've been noticing that some officers just, they just, I'm not gonna name them, but they just like go in, open their car door, close it, and then start driving. So I'm gonna ask maybe for all the officers, before you get in your vehicle, just walk around with the car off, and then you can turn it on and then walk around again just to make sure there aren't any safety problems. Make sure to look under it too. Do an aftermath walk around at all times when you get in, okay? Like if you get out and then you get back in, just make sure you do a walk around check afterward just for safety, because I don't want any of the officers getting hurt. Because we had a couple officers be absent lately, so we want to have a strong police fleet. So I'm gonna ask, please do a walk around safety check so we don't have any problem. Thank you. Okay, so keeping vehicles clean. So I think we should keep the vehicles clean, because lately, as I said, I've been noticing little tiny stains here in the vehicles. Oh, real quick, before I move on, any people want to talk about the new police fleet in the council team? Deputy City Clerk Stripey?
Yes, I just wanted to say, we also got some new police cars. About the cars, we have all sorts of different colors on them. Each car has a different color, but I don't want to spoil it.
Okay, thank you. Midnight? Pass. Mayor Pro Tim? Pass. City Manager Barry? Pass. City Attorney Brownie? Yes, I just wanted to say that not only did the fleet and transportation pay for it, but so do I. I have to help them pay for it. So please try your best not to damage them, because these cars, because they are a great running fleet. And just wanted to say, please try not to damage it, okay? Thank you. That was great, thank you. Anything on the vehicle safety check? Real quick, anything you want to say on the vehicle safety check? No? Okay. So, oh, City Attorney?
Yes, I just wanted to say that the vehicle safety check, we all have to pay for these cars. We all have to pay to buy these cars, a lot of money. So I'm gonna ask, please do a safety check so we don't lose any officers and still don't like damage them, because it was a lot of money.
Yep, we also have my co-mayor Roger right here. So Roger, do you have any thoughts on the vehicle safety check?
No.
Okay, thank you. So back to keeping vehicles clean. I've been noticing little stains on the seats and like sometimes the computers in there, and the vehicles are dusty. Okay, sometimes they're really dusty. So please, like when you get out, there are some wipes in the glove box. So please, before you get out, wipe down the keyboard and everything, because I've been noticing like little red stains on the keyboards too. Okay? So please, please, please keep the vehicles clean. I don't want to touch the seatbelt or stealing royalty grease on it, okay? Because we pay a lot of money for these vehicles, okay? And it's a lot of work to clean them. So please, at all times and all costs, please try and keep them clean. Thank you. So does the council have anything to say on the keeping vehicles clean? Co-mayor Roger?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, please keep the vehicles clean, because I've been opening the trunk, and I've been seeing like dirty fingerprints all on the windshield inside of the trunk and also on the back seats. And there's like a little first aid kit, I've been seeing a bunch of fingerprints on it. So please wipe everything down after you touch them. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. We also have a box of wipes, a couple wipes back in the thing. So if you touch something in the trunk, you could just get the wipes and wipe it down. Thank you. So I just want to give a quick reminder, remember to gas up vehicles before leaving, before leaving, and lock them up too. Now, this is all safety, because keeping vehicles clean, like we don't want like, you know, we don't want like anything like, if it touches something, we don't want the car to blow up.
One thing, Mr. Mayor, it is there a lot of money. So please keep the vehicles clean, gas them up, and lock them up before you leave. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't want any intruders getting in and stealing one of our police cars too. And remember to gas them up, because if we, if you forget to gas one up, then when you get in, we use the vehicles for the whole day. So please remember to gas it up, because if you come in and it's not gassed up, then we're short a car, okay? So please remember to gas up all vehicles at all times when you park them back in the police station. Thank you. And remember to lock the vehicles. Please don't lock the keys in the car. Deputy City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hollow? Pass. Commissioner Darby? Pass. Commissioner Lucas? Pass. Co-mayor Roger? Pass. Councilmember Midnight? Pass. City, City Manager Barry? Pass. City Attorney Brownie? Pass. Mayor Pro Tim Freckles? Pass. Mayor Dylan Rubin?
Um, I think I pretty much said everything. So let's move on. Don't leave the keys in the car, because that'd be a good, that'd be an eye for a criminal, okay? Please don't leave the keys in the car. Please keep them on the police belt keychain. And then when you come into work, so as for the police department, you basically have wear, put on like your regular shirt and stuff. And then when you come in, you basically put on your shirt and everything, and then your belt, and then you come to work with your belt on, and then the keys are in the key holder. So please, don't take them home, okay? These keys are city property, not personal, okay? Only take your personal car keys, or else we're gonna have to have the tow truck come out and tow the vehicle back to the police station where it can get like new batteries and then go back out. That'd just be a whole nightmare. We don't want that to happen. Thank you. So last, last topic, last item we're talking about here. Make sure, if you're a landlord of a building and you're watching this, because all landlords watch this building on the meeting, I know. So please, if you're at your building, please make sure to walk around it to do safety inspections, okay? Because we don't want like, across the street from my house, there's like a little piece of a side hing, of the overhang, that is about to fall off, okay? And we don't want, we don't want it to fall off, because if it falls on someone, it's 10 feet over a balcony. So if it falls, there's probably, someone's probably gonna get really hurt and then sue. We don't want that, okay? Yeah. Make sure, if you're, and make sure that you have your lights and everything on and everything's working, okay? So I'm gonna call the end of our meeting right now. So thank you, and we'll see you in two weeks. Corn. Yes, thank you very much. So let's get right to it. So we're gonna start public comment right now. So if you have a comment, if you're on Zoom or in person, please raise your hand like that. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand like that, so it's visible to your camera. We'll give speakers a couple minutes. Also, my co-mayor Roger is sitting right next to the deputy city clerk, so he will be watching it from that angle, okay? Thank you very much. Okay, time's up. Do you have any speakers? Mr. Deputy City Clerk, do you have any speakers? We have one. Okay. Lucy. Lucy? So Lucy's behind the camera, so she won't really be seen. We're still trying to fix up our cameras to angle them at a way, but Lucy's behind the camera, the podium's there, so, okay. Lucy?
Hi, everybody. Thank you for letting me speak up here. I just wanted to say a big thank you to the Wellsville City Council meeting team and the Safety Commission for making our streets of Wellsville safe and keeping, and keeping the city man-management safe. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy. Thank you for your comment. Okay. Mr. Deputy City Clerk, do we have any other public comments, just to clarify? No. That's it. Okay, thank you very much. So I wanted to talk about the new police fleet. So as you all know, Wellsville got a new police fleet about the end of March. We have some nice cars, so we have two undercover black cars. And then we, and then we didn't do a whole new fleet. We just added a couple new SUVs, and we added an SUV to the Park Ranger team. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for coming to the Wellsville City Council meeting. So we're gonna get right to it. My co-mayor Roger Rubin is sitting right there in the audience behind me, so he will be right there. So Deputy City Clerk Stripey, please follow the roll.
Councilmember Kitty? Here. Councilmember Sealy?
Oh, Mr. Deputy City Clerk, Sealy had to be out today, so Mr. Bun Bun is covering for him today, okay?
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Midnight? Here. City Manager Barry? Here. City Attorney Brownie? Here. Mayor Pro Tim Freckles? Here. Mayor Dylan Rubin? Here. You have a corn.
Yes, thank you very much. Let's get into public comment. Do you have any speakers today? We'll give you a couple minutes, three minutes, raise your hand. We have one more public comment waiting in line, so Roger.
Hello, everybody. Hello, council team. Thank you for having me on here. So I just wanted to talk about Tippy's arrest, and thank you for arresting Tippy Rubin. She was a big danger to the Wellsville city and also surrounding cities around us. So thank you so much for arresting her. And I'm also here to talk about another thing, the golf course. So I was wondering if you guys are gonna add a new department since the golf course is huge. So I was wondering if you guys may be requesting to add a golf course department for the golf course maintenance and also Parks and Recreation could maybe help. I just wanted to say another thing about the golf course. Maybe, maybe you can do like cleanups every once in a while, like go around the park and like do landscaping and everything. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. City Clerk, do you have any speakers?
Yes, we have one, Lucy.
Okay, Lucy, you have three minutes.
I'm on my underground in Wellsville. It really helps to have not that much clutter up on top. So I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so Councilmember, City Manager Barry, do you have any announcements to make?
I'm pass, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Midnight, do you have any announcements to make?
Um, yes, I just wanted to say thank you to the City Attorney for maybe having this special meeting to getting some more contracts that Wellsville can connect with. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim, do you have any announcements to make?
Um, I just wanted to remind everybody that about the leprechauns that are going around town, please be sure to buy one of the telescopes. We have to spot one of the leprechauns. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. That looks like we have all our announcements. And please be sure, because you can get them for free in the month of March, and you can get them anytime, different designs for each holiday. I just got some note from Director Jane, the school district director, that there, that she has been going to some classrooms at all schools, and she has been seeing kids playing video games on their Apple laptops. I just wanted to say, this will not be accepted, okay? The school laptops are only for learning, so we will be blocking every video game on those. The laptops are only for learning, okay? They're only for learning, not for playing video games. And if you play video games, we will give you a warning, okay? But if you play video games, straight to the principal's office, okay? We will not accept video games on school time, okay? No video games allowed on our Apple laptops at wellsvilleelementaryschool.wellsvilleusd. Thank you. We are banning those, okay? And you will be going to the principal's office or being suspended if you play video games on your Apple laptop. That will not be accepted. Thank you. So it looks like we got, all got to ban video games from the Apple laptops, okay? So Director Jane couldn't, is sitting in the aisle behind the camera, so she will be blocking all the connection to video games on the laptop. Thank you very much. We got a yes vote, it will pass. So Director Jane will be banning them for Apple laptops. Thank you. So we will, so let's move on to item, last, last item, First Responders Training Day. So March 24th will be First Responders Training Day, made by police, fire, and all the city departments will close off the sixth story of the parking structure to do training for any case of emergency, okay? We will be doing lots of training, and just to let you know, please stay out of their way, because we want our first responders to get as much training as they can to help our community, and they are a big part of our community. So I just wanted to say thank you very much. And we're also gonna train about customer service, so the police and any city department get along with the businesses when they call for help. And we're also gonna train about customer services, so the community and the police get along together. This is March 24th, so please stay, be sure to stay out of their way. Deputy City Clerk, please take the roll call on this agenda item. Councilmember Freckles? Yes. And Mayor Dylan? Yes. Thank you very much. Let's move on to the next item. Next, let's move on to a new police fleet. I want to give a big thank you to Wellsville Department of Fleet and Transportation for giving us these new wonderful cars. We used to have black and white cars. Now we have white with a blue line in the middle. I like those cars. And we want gas, because we don't want there to be a, say, for example, we don't want there to be something terrible like a school shooting, and then the police says, oh, we'll be there in three hours, we just have to charge our car. We don't want that. We just want, like, if there's a police call, we just want them to respond immediately. We don't want to wait three hours, and then when they pick there, there's three hours, then everybody would be dead. We don't want that to happen. So our police fleet is big and grand, and if you want to do a tour of the car, you can go to the Wellsville Police Station website and ask for a tour guide. These tours end the end of March, okay? So be sure to sign up. And also, another thing. So there, Wellsville, March 1st, Wellsville always has, there were a bunch of leprechauns running around Wellsville. So if you want one of these telescopes to go spot one, go to Wellsville City Hall and buy one today, now. Thank you. Because these Wellsville, these Wellsville leprechauns are really, really sneaky. Okay. So you, all you know, for Wellsville, you all know about the construction work that's going on in the golf course? How a water pipe bursted underground and we had to fix it? Well, it happened last week of February. It'll be closed until next week. It'll reopen, because we still are working on construction and putting the pipe back in. So, yeah. We're gonna have to put the pipe back in, so it'll probably be ready and up and running by next week. So I want to move on now to, we're gonna add a new department to Wellsville. So we're gonna, you know Parks and Recreation. We're gonna add golf course maintenance, since our golf course is huge. Golf course maintenance will be working with Parks and Recreation to work with the golf course, be doing trimming, landscaping, and everything. And every Monday at 9:00 a.m., we will be starting to, we will be starting cleanups, okay? Now, City Manager Barry, you had a message for it, right?
Yeah, mister, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say, we will be doing cleanups at 9:00 p.m. And just to let you know, we do not know what time it'll end. It'll take as long as it's gonna take, okay? So we will have Parks and Recreation, Park Ranger, Police, Public Works, and Water Department. Those five departments be going out and working to clean up the city. Deputies? Okay. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say, that is a great idea of what you're doing. So thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. Thank you. So let's move on to Tippy's arrest. So as you know, Tippy is a dangerous criminal that was, that had eight warrants, probably 10. But we caught her just in time before she got to her 10th warrant. So she is arrested, and she was a dangerous criminal on the streets of Wellsville. I just want to say, because some people don't watch our press conferences, fear not, Tippy has been arrested, okay? And she will have her court trial tomorrow. It'll be starting up tomorrow again, okay? Be sure to watch it on Wellsville Weekly News. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, council member, Mr. Councilmember. So this one, I want to have the Mayor Pro Tim introduce. So Mayor Pro Tim, there is something that happens once every year, every year during St. Patrick's Day. So I'll let you take the mic.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So every March 17th on St. Patrick's Day at 9:00 to 12:30, we have the St. Patrick's Day Art Show. We have plenty and lots of art for sale there, okay? So be sure to go check it out on Wellsville Event Services. So be sure to go check it out on wellsvilledeventservices.com.City. Thank you very much.
The host, um, there will also be police there, so if you wanna go there too, you can go there. We have, um, some breakfast, coffee, and the host of it will be Mary Ling. She will be there hosting it, and, um, she could not come to the city council meeting, but she will be there on St. Patrick's Day, okay? Thank you very much. We are about to be closing the meeting, so any other announcements from the council team? We'll start off with Roger.
Um, yes, I have one announcement. Uh, I just wanted to say, we will be selling free St. Patrick's Day decorations to the community, and this deal will not be forever. It'll last until the last day of March. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roger. Um, Mr. City Attorney, do you have, um, any announcements you wanna say, um, to the city before we close off the meeting?
Yes, I just wanted to say, we will be having the city art contest. Whoever can do a drawing and bring it to Wellsville Community Services, whoever gets the best drawing will win a prize, okay? And this is from today until April second, okay?
Mr. Deputy City Clerk, do you have any announcements to make?
Uh, no, I'm good. Oh, um, we will be selling, so we have a new store opening up in Wellsville, the Wellsville Fitness Center. It'll be opening up on April first, so please, be sure to go. You'll get free off membership. Thank you.
Okay, and Councilmember Kitty, do you have any announcements to make?
Um, yes, I just wanted to say that, um, we give free mint ice cream to, um, people who walk into the city cafe wearing green, okay? And this lasts until April first. Thank you.
Um, thank you, and, um, Councilmember Bun Bun, um, do you have any, um, things, announcements to make?
Um, no. Thank you. Pass. Thank you.
And Mr. City Manager Barry, do you have anything, um, last, um, to, um, any announcements?
Thank you very much, and I'll see you in two weeks.